It's gonna be right. All this meeting in order, notice of a special meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty four at five P M. At the city council chamber at thirty nine forty seven Lincoln Avenue, Groves, Texas. Y'all rise for the prayer and please, please.
Father, we come before you in prayer this evening and we give you thanks for all the blessings that you've bestowed on us. Father, we ask of you that you will please watch out over the decisions that are made tonight and lead us through it. We ask of you, Father, to be with the citizens and first responders, Jesus Christ, in our name we pray. Amen.
With my agents, you're the fire, the United States of America. In due regard, God, for the disdain, one inch under God, in the middle of this world, with the great injustice of fraud. Item number four will be roll call. Airborne here, Air Pro Tem Adams here, Councilmember Canitas here, Councilmember Oliver here, Councilmember Dugus. Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item six will be reports from, uh, mayor, council members or city staff. Any reports tonight? Item number seven, citizen comments. Have any citizen comments? Say your name and address, please.
My name is Christine Maia Haxit, it's forty three, I want to go to San Avenue. And I want to, I would just want to know what the legality is for the golf carts and the kids.
For your citizens' comments, we will not be able to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, well, can I comment that I don't like it? I'm sorry, what is your name? Christine Maia Haxit.
Christine Maia Haxit, okay, and what is your question?
Well, I had a question, but that's not for my, so my comment is that, um, the children on the golf carts need to be supervised.
Okay.
Yeah, the citizen comments. All right, we'll now go into item number eight, which will be the public hearing. We now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tax rate and increase. Bear with me, this is a long one. Notice of a public hearing on tax increase. A tax rate of point six zero one nine two four per one hundred valuation has been proposed by the governing body of the city of Groves. The proposed tax rate, point six zero one nine two four per one hundred. The no new revenue tax rate is point five five nine seven five one per hundred. The voter approval tax rate is point five nine five five forty or four zero per one hundred. The de minimis rate is point six zero one nine two five per one hundred. You know, new revenue tax rate is a tax rate for the twenty twenty four tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for the city of Groves from the same properties in both the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three tax year and the twenty twenty four tax year. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate that the city of Groves may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. Unless the de minimis rate for the city of Groves exceeds the voter approval rate for the city of Groves. The de minimis rate is the rate equal to the sum of no new revenue maintenance and operations rate for the city of Groves. The rate that will increase five hundred thousand and the current debt rate for the city of Groves. The proposed tax rate is greater than a no new revenue tax rate. This means that the city of Groves is proposing to increase property taxes for the twenty twenty four tax year. Public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be held on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four at five P M at the city hall. Thirty nine forty seven Lincoln Avenue, Groves, Texas, seven seven six one nine. The proposed tax rate is greater than the voter approval tax rate, but not greater than the de minimis tax rate. And does not exceed the rate that allows voters to petition for an election under section twenty six point zero seven five tax code. If the city grows adopts the proposed tax rate, the city grows is not required to hold an election so that voters may object, uh, accept or reject the proposed tax rate. And the qualified voters of the city grows may not petition the city grows to require an election to be held to determine whether to reduce the proposed tax rate. Your taxes owed under any of the rates mentioned above can be calculated as follows. Property tax amount equals tax rate times taxable value of the property divided by a hundred. Who would proposal votes? For the proposal was Chris Born, Mark McAdams, Ronald Dugus and Paul Oliver. Against the proposal were none, present and not voting. We had absent, tax number B Canitas. Now we recognize the making requests, that would be Richard Ozzy or Mr. Ruth.
This is the public hearing. This is the public hearing.
So, uh, on to questions for city council. City council have any questions or comments?
Um, I do, but I would like to hear from the people that came to speak first.
Okay.
Did anyone want to speak at the public hearing about this?
Item number four will be citizens and girls who wish to speak in support of the request. Anyone wish to speak in support of the request? Item number five, anyone wish to speak against the request?
Your name and address.
My name and address.
Name and address, please.
Yes, sir, I will.
My name's Brandon Holmes, it's forty thirty three Redwood Street. In Groves.
There's a sign.
Yes, I signed it for this one.
Okay.
Get your conference, say, no, I've got a pile of papers, questions, considerations here. Y'all bear with me, I don't go on mic very often, so I appreciate y'all's patience. Um, I'd like to speak against the proposal for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five tax rate increase. The proposed tax rate and increase are included in the fiscal year twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five budget. Um, and here's that some of these, uh, revenues from the tax going to the general fund, which are directly related to this proposed tax. So what I would like to do is review some of the items in the budget that are fed from this proposed tax increase. Um, if you guys are available to offer explanations or review or possible amendments, uh, for my concerns, I would appreciate that. Um, so do you, I believe inside of the agenda here, you have the entire budget listed, is that correct? Okay, uh, would you mind if we scroll down to the org chart of that? And I want to apologize ahead of time, I, I did a lot of due diligence on research and some of these things that kind of ran out of time and didn't get the opportunity to ask these, these questions for one season. It's a PDF, control shift plus, I think I rotated usually. Both of those at the same time. So the org chart here is part of the budget that's, you know, some of which is being funded by the tax increase, proposed tax increase. Within this org chart, uh, there's some information missing or it differs from what's in the body of budget. So one of those items being the public works, there's a director there in the branch. Um, all the other directors have one listed beside that role. So are we to assume that there's one public works director?
There's one, there's one, yes.
Uh, the name of this department, Parks and Recreation. That department is not listed in the budget. The heading is not used down in our budget.
I don't follow you.
So Parks and Rec, we have an assistant, two laborers and whatever that line is after laborer. Custodian, custodian, one light equipment operator, two part-time facilities and one part-time, I guess, general laborer maybe. Um, I don't see this particular part of the org chart addressed in the budget anywhere.
Recreation and special events.
Okay, so that's been changed, okay. Over in the director finance tab. Um, do we have one director in that role? That's, there's a blank, there's not a number beside that person under finance law.
There's one, where, where are we here?
Right, so I want to direct her finance and there's finance. Yeah, so we have one director there.
Correct.
I'm, I'm just getting an accurate, uh, look of, of the people that are paid from our general budget that are funded by this, this increase in tax rate here. Some of the departments under the water plant and as I go through, I, I promise to keep this as short as possible. There's some deviation from what's displayed here from what's in the budget and you guys may have some easy answers for that.
Well, good to save you some time.
Yes, sir.
I would go by the budget, this diagram may not accurately reflect what is in the budget.
Okay, okay, so can I ask that this org chart that's, that's represented here for our city employees be amended or or rather is there a more current org chart that resides outside of this budget?
This probably needs to be updated.
Okay, so that's my request that we update this org chart. Um, I know you guys evaluated positions that are needed and some positions that are being released, so some asking on that. Can we, uh, scroll down a few pages down into, uh, the budget from here? Yeah, it's, it's page, uh, I think eleven or twelve underneath the notable policies and introduction. So of the other page numbers, uh, yeah, control shift minus will put you back the other way. Under health insurance, uh, in this, this second paragraph here, it says, beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty four, the city began in practice required employees contribute as part of the employee insurance premiums. As I'm understanding, we approved the new insurance policy for this year with a zero dollar deductible for the employees for that happened, that, that get approved at the last meeting?
Let me clarify what you're saying.
Yes, thank you.
Starting last, twenty three, twenty four and through this year, the employees contributed thirty dollars to the employee only premium. What was approved at the last meeting was, uh, no contribution to the premium.
Okay.
So it is different from the deductible. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, well, so they contributed thirty dollars to the premium last year.
And this year.
And this year, so this year going forward, still going to be thirty dollars to the premium?
No.
Okay, can, can we amend this part of the budget to, to reflect that? That wording there, list for clarity.
Okay, now that's because of higher deductible, isn't that right?
Yes, ma'am, I, I was, I mean, I, I under, I understood, you know.
Well, this, this, um, budget memo
Yes, sir.
was written and presented prior to
Yes, sir.
That they, this predates the, uh, when we receive the results of our, our, our
Okay, so we, we don't have a need to make any revisions to the proposal unless there's a large number amount or but the glaring error or something like that.
The budget, yes, it dated the day on whatever.
Yes, first of August, yes, sir.
And I can go back and rewrite, change that without changing the date.
Okay.
Now, the insurance that you're talking about, that always comes in
Okay.
at a real late time for us when we're fixing the budget.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Can we scroll down to the city manager section here, please? Which I think it's, it's page, sorry, I'm losing most of my pages listed. So we're running around page sixty five probably. I apologize, my records have gone down, the budget. So I believe that's page fifty seven of today's agenda. Page forty six, four hundred and fifty five. So I'm looking down to the next page of this, page fifty seven, please.
Make sure you're talking.
Under item zero three dash zero ten, building and grounds. I noticed a, an increase to that amount, was that discussed, um, in labor workshop somewhere that I missed?
It's the exceeds or something there.
And look guys, I'm sorry, like, hit you guys with a lot of questions, um. Most of my budgeting experience comes from private business and there's, there's lots and lots of document to go through all this stuff, um. This is, and this is not me questioning you guys, judgment on things, it's just me wanting to understand what, what these major changes are in the budget. When I say major, you know, five, ten thousand dollar differences.
Wait, we'll see, it's not a major change, actually, a reduction from thirty five thousand.
Yes.
Building of grounds goes to, um, repair and upkeep of the building.
Okay, so not necessarily the ground, but fix it, not mowing the grass, but fixing the things where that's on the grounds, okay. On oh six one ninety, I, I noticed we had, uh, no janitorial services in past years, um. Is, and this is a new budget item for this. We know that covers.
It's recode that was being charged for buildings and grounds and for clarity's sake, set up the janitorial services alone.
Perfect, okay, that answers a couple of questions, thank you, sir.
That's why you see the, the difference between what's proposed versus what is the current year from thirty five to twenty five, at ten thousand. Down, down to the new.
Yes, sir, I understand that now, thank you. Oh, seven dash oh eighty. So we have nothing because we haven't held election this year for this, this estimate. Can we scroll to the finance department, just a question of where it's something to go to that?
Sixty three, fifty four, whatever it is.
Um, so I don't know, so, so I miss, there's a oh, oh six dash one ninety five lot cleanup. Um, is that, what, what does that entail?
Leans and the grass cut.
Mister Ozzy, could you speak up to something?
That will be the leans and the grass cutting cost.
Okay. So when, so we said that move the grass, did he ask to know it for him, that's what that is, correct? Um, can we go to Parks and Rec, that will be budget page fifty two, so sorry, sixty two. Who's that previous page, sir?
Sixty three seventy two.
So I noticed an increase in hospitalizations for that department. They have a change in scope or something going on with that online.
It's a personal health insurance decision.
Okay. Thank you. Page eighty three of that budget. Which is I think there's just stuck at the translation.
What were you looking for?
So at the bottom of that section, um, under inspections. That's, that's where, yeah, would be I apologize, we won't have the agenda, why I was working on that translation here.
Looking for them wasn't.
Under inspections, yeah. So under page ninety two of that. Food supplies, maintenance services, miscellaneous and capital outlay. Think we're in a different section there. Under inspections, oh yeah, down there at the bottom. So the abatements and demolition program. What, what is that hundred K, um, covering?
Building demolition.
Okay, we have, we have buildings all adopted to be demolished.
They're currently thirty so much.
Okay. All right, so that's residential bomb cells and such.
Mostly residential.
Okay.
Don't know how many commercial there are, but it's for not like the residential.
Got you.
We just haven't been doing very many.
Got you, so raise, in other words, I, we're just.
Plan to do some more.
Got you. So if we went to the garage department, which is
Eighty nine ninety eight.
This generally about this apartment, the org chart showed the garage combined with solid waste, is that an organizational change? In the org chart, it showed solid waste slash garage, uh, in that org chart.
Garage is in the general.
Hmm, okay. Uh, if we move to page ninety, uh, five of the proposed budget, which would be I apologize, I'll be, gonna be a little better prepared next time.
Well, you are always welcome to contact me.
Yes, sir.
For large.
No, I, I understand some of these questions or that, uh, and I hate to hold up the hearing on behalf of that. Believe you me, I was working, working an extra time, you know, trying to sort through some of these things. So uh, so there's a, there's a section here called city property maintenance. And if you go to the top of that section, we've got, uh, or salary and wages, I think if we continue onward. Yeah, so, um, I did not see this department on our org chart and where that fell under the city property management section.
It's a general fund department of all terms of the public works.
Okay. Got you, thank you, Miss Rob. Under the next section, it's called miscellaneous. There's, uh, there's some items that make sense in there like, uh, deforestation and city lighting and stuff. And, uh, there are also some, under the miscellaneous section. Thank you for looking at the next section. So it would be one hundred. Yeah, just.
Mister Ruth, could you go up to? Okay, that, total, uh, total miscellaneous?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, under total special items. Okay, that says four hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and my page says four hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred.
Which, which page do you have there?
Uh, it's miscellaneous, I
No, I
Expenditure detail and
I've got, I got four thirteen, Bob, that's, um.
I hope give it the F words.
Yeah.
So it is four thirteen, okay. So it is four thirteen, okay.
So are these just miscellaneous calls that cannot be attributed to any particular department? Or is it special projects or something?
Or they. Cross department alliance.
Got you.
Uh, can we uh, can I ask a question? We'll ask to uh Mister Ozzy. Mister Ozzy, um, the chamber of commerce, it shows sixty five thousand dollars and I know that's. The contract amount, but where where are you putting the the money that we pay for their advertising? Because that's.
Probably be an advertising publicity.
Okay, you're putting it in there.
If it's not related to the contract, that's.
Okay, you know, do you have uh, can you? Kind of remember how much that would be?
It's very from year to year.
Well, yeah, it's over fourteen thousand, I know.
No, no, the answer to your question, I don't remember off the top of my.
So the computer software and system, that's that's a maintenance line item, not not an investment in new software as far as we know.
Being an annual licensing.
Okay. Got you. Well, counsel, I appreciate you guys' time and um. And you're doing my questions with this. I know that the budget time is always stressful, which I know. I know that you guys are doing what you can to find funds. Uh, to keep our city moving, uh, keep our city moving forward. I just know that. Some of these things don't happen, we can't do the things we need to do and, you know, I just just had some random questions about that. Sorry, waiting to so late again to to ask those things, so appreciate you guys.
I thank you for showing your concern and efforts that you've put into. Questioning this this.
Budget. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Well, I'm glad to be a Texan now, I lived in Louisiana for a lot of years. So I don't know if you know, but Louisiana, they they take tax out of your paycheck and it goes to the state. Then it may or may not triple back down. So being in Louisiana, you can at least go to the county, go to the city and say, hey, where's my tax money going, you know? Thank you guys very much.
Anyone else wants to speak against the request?
Tanner Thompson, forty nine sixty one Beaumont Avenue, Rhodes, Texas, seven seven six one nine. In the last meeting, Mister Mary, you tasked me with finding solutions to generate revenue for the city outside of reaching into the citizens' pockets. As I admitted in the last meeting, I know that the utility increases, tax increases. And other fees are generally the only way that a city can generate resident. But there are other ways to do this. I was able to come up with some ideas after doing countless hours of research. One, this is a hot topic, it's being discussed everywhere, is the old fire station. Y'all have plans or what y'all intend on doing the old fire station?
It has been brought up in our workshops. It has not been addressed at this point. It was brought up once before and it was decided not to do anything with it. There has to be money in put into it before it can be. An asset.
Alright.
Yes, there is a lease on the office portion.
Alright.
So it does, it covers its utilities.
The lease does, yes, it covers.
I know that Beaumont, at one point, they uh turned one of their old fire stations into a museum. I didn't know if maybe there was a uh, any applications out there to restore uh. Historical buildings or, you know, keep. Buildings historic inside of cities that you're gonna block for, that could go towards. Redoing, renovating the building, that way it could be used for some type of revenue producing building, you know. Assets, so to speak, whether it could be uh turned into somewhere that people could run out for venues or anything like that. Or just whatever other ideas y'all could come up with.
Uh, Mister Crete, do we know exactly? Not exactly. Do we have a guesstimation? Of how much money it would take to repair that building? Is there um asbestos in it?
I assume that, yeah.
It is asbestos.
Yeah, so it would take a while.
All mechanical systems.
The electric was in there. Our person has lived in it for thirty two years.
Yeah, I understand. I would just hate for it to just sit there and continue, you know, become an eyesore and something that the city's just, you know. Paying utilities on or whatever your taxes on. When it could maybe one day be demolished and sold off for. You know, a new city hall could be built there or something like that, it could be used for something else. Rather than laying to waste, so to speak.
We we have talked about that probably privately about um. Uh, about a new city hall being built on that property, um, that would be in the future.
Right, and I used to work in hazardous remediation, so I understand the expenses and difficulties. When it comes to mold, let alone asbestos, you know, there's certain ways you have to remove it. There's certain places that it has to be shipped to, has to be stored certain ways, and it's all very, very expensive. Is it also possible that we take a look at the current city zoning map? Would it be beneficial to rezone? Making there more real estate options for business, more commercial property available to the city? Lots that are close to the, you know, city lines jurisdictional boundaries. That port author may be doing nothing with, that the county's doing nothing with, that maybe we could rezone. For the city of boroughs, land use would be part of the comprehensive plan that the. Or apply it to the grant form.
We've talked about this, this was before you came, Mister Crete, city council did talk about that, about. The zoning and observing our uh commercial property. Uh, because. A lot of that commercial property has been taken up by residential. And so we had talked about the zoning issues with that to preserve our commercial property.
Thank you. Have y'all, outside of the water department, which we talked about last time, I know. A lot of people have had issues in the past with billing and stuff like that. Have you all evaluated other internal operations such as? Fees and bills being collected properly and accurately and in a timely manner? Our funds for violations being enforced and collected? What about the efficiency of operations? Just for one example, how often are dump trucks going to the landfill each day? Are there ways to cut down on the cost of operations aside from halting? Employee raises since it seems that's a, that's a note for y'all, I understand how step raises work. I work for a city myself, so I understand how contracts. You know, CPAs, step raises and all that works, but have y'all looked into basically? Being more efficient as a city holder? As far as fees? You know, billing, stuff like that.
In the last two years, we've updated all of our permitting. Rising along with some of the fees for. Anywhere from food trucks to game rooms to uh licenses with the city. And so it's been evaluated. Uh, and it's been brought up to current standards where, you know, at some point, there's times you can't. Over generate.
Yes, sir.
Would you have to answer to that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, but. You know, in the last few years, we have done that as a council, brought everything up to a current standard. So that we are. Covering our costs. Plus enough revenue. Uh, so that we're not losing money on those items.
Okay.
Restriction on that, and we have restrictions on um how to. Spend the money from the fees and that kind of thing.
Right, does that include the like mun- municipal court? Fees and stuff like that, because I know the city that I worked for at one time, they finally reevaluated it and they were like. Basically, charging half of what all the other cities were for, you know, s- classy city ordinance violations and stuff like that. As far as like something like a public intoxication or something of that sort. To make sure y'all are covering the general costs and everything like that.
We did raise the court costs, I believe.
We've raised a few uh like permits for ID badges and things of that nature. Uh, when it comes to. Game rooms, some of those functions that are being used more often these days. Building department is currently evaluating software. To improve uh efficiency and effectiveness there.
And we have something in October, we're going to reevaluate. Some of the fees in October.
Correct. Thank you. I also know that it's common practice to offer. A five-year tax adjustment or exemption for businesses, especially for franchises or corporations. Is this something that the city offers and is there, can we freeze that or make adjustments? I also understand that this is how y'all entice businesses to come into the city, but right now it's clear that we need money. And this is a way that we can recoup money.
I believe that this time, the only deal we have was for the subdivision. And it was because he provided all of the infrastructure himself. Repayment plan for the water, the sewer and. And the drainage, not the roads.
Are you talking about Indian Springs?
Uh, I don't believe Chick-fil-A got any.
No, Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A did not. They did not, um. The developers boxing brand for Starbucks, they did come to the EDC and received um fifteen thousand dollars.
Now, I would say the EDC money is separate, though those reimbursable grants, but not.
It's not a tax rate, no. Okay, thank you.
Oh, and as far as the water, um, how the water department is being uh handled, Mister Ozzy can speak to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Mister Ozzy, he can speak to how the water department with the. What you're asking is um, um, when the people are paying and and who's lighting that kind of thing.
Right.
Mister Ozzy can tell you.
Do you have a specific question?
No, no, I was just asking if y'all have evaluated, basically done almost an audit to make sure everything was being done as efficiently as possible. To make sure, you know, every, the money is being collected in a timely manner. That way you're not a month behind or a month behind, three months behind.
Standing policies. To coincide with more with what our written policies are.
Alright.
Uh, in order to do that.
Alright.
Turn them off if they've exceeded their security deposit.
Right.
Stop estimating bills. Get true reads on things, that has been a focus for the water department. If not in the last two years, at least in the last year. That's something Mister Ruth has has uh headed up.
Thank you. We've also looked at every single. Electric meter that the city has, we've looked at. Every gas connection that we have, made adjustments, or made a look at every single phone line that we have. Made adjustments. So we would. Continue to do that on a regular basis.
Basically, just to clarify maybe for people that don't understand, make sure you don't have natural gas leaking. Outside past the meter and charging it over, is that makes any sure we don't have? Connections that aren't being used anymore.
For instance, we have nine meters at lines mark. Uh, eight of them are only used during the contest.
Right.
So they have been terminated up until the point that they are needed, they'll be turned back on, they'll be terminated again. So that you're not paying metering fees for the entire year.
Alright, thank you, uh. I understand, as I've said multiple times, that I understand that these tax rates. Are the quickest way to make mo- get us out of the deficit that we're in. And it's how you recoup as much money as possible. All these other things that we've just talked about are small things and. Basically, what I'm asking is for y'all, and it sounds like y'all are doing these things, but uh. What everybody was upset about, especially, I guess, two meetings ago now. Was it just didn't appear that y'all were doing anything besides. Hiding up the tax rates and the citizens were wanting it all to show. Like, good faith and effort, they are going to try to generate revenue. Or, you know, slow down spending or be more efficient in spending outside of tax rates. So I just wanted to come in here and ask those questions, which it sounds like y'all are at least trying to do some of these things. The one thing that I do still oppose very strongly is what uh, and maybe my wording will be wrong. Is the road usage fee? Y'all are already hitting us on the city tax, y'all are hitting us across the board on the utilities, uh. I I just don't see that it's fair to do all, every single option available in the one year. But just, I mean. That's a little ridiculous, you know, that's. I understand y'all are trying to get the money back as fast as y'all can.
We do know that this is not in this budget.
I'm sorry?
Road usage fee is not in this budget.
So.
We haven't even discussed it, it's just been brought up. There has been no plan to implement it, there's no fees for it in this budget.
So you have the fifty some odd thousand dollars is not going to come out of this budget to have the audit done?
We haven't approved that.
Apparently, there will be a, at least one workshop that the council discussed the idea. Alright. And after the council has discussed it and got everything out, if they want to proceed. Then there would be a uh. Uh, we'd move forward with some sort of fee. Okay, so.
Nothing in this budget, the um street transportation. The transportation use fee are not in this budget.
But if y'all. Had the workshop within this fiscal year. And then approved it within this fiscal year, then it would go into effect, correct? And so.
That is one option, yes.
And then so then in turn, we would be being hit with all fees. Mentioned in in the in one year. Correct, if if y'all didn't go that route. Okay, thank you, uh.
Uh, on the street use fee. It's. Maybe it's a tax, but it's but it's called a fee. The reason it's called a fee is so that an ordinance can be done. Instead of the people in the city voting, if it's called a tax, we have to vote on it. But an ordinance, it is voted on by the city council.
So that's to avoid the citizens from voting no against an affair. But it's a loophole. I mean, if we're gonna call, if we're gonna call it chicken and chicken, let's call it chicken and chicken here.
We have to stay on topic.
Okay.
So this is not in this budget, Mister. We need to not talk about this, this is not what.
No, it's not in the budget, but you did bring it up.
It doesn't matter, it's not, it's not part of it.
They have the right to know.
When we talk about it, it can be.
If it's gonna be, if it's gonna be.
What has been talked about so that you know? Okay, what has been talked about? Is that it would start with one dollar, it would be attached to your water bill.
Yep.
Okay, that one dollar would generate forty seven thousand dollars, which would help us get a study. Which would in turn tell us how much a street usage fee would should be. But it would be on a tier level because residents use it, the streets, they don't tear the streets up normally. Dump trucks do, you know, heavy vehicles, heavy business vehicles do, so it would be a tier, just so you know. And I know Mister Born, it is not. In the tax rate and not in the budget.
But but it wouldn't technically, if you're gonna take money from the general fund from this budget. To pay for that, wouldn't you?
It is, it is not in this. So.
But if the money comes from this budget, is it not budgeted?
When when it comes to that, we will talk about it.
So be at the workshop.
What I'm saying is, is, is I am tasked with keeping this to what is at hand.
Yes, sir.
And that is this budget and this tax rate that generates this money. And what I'm telling you is there are no lineups in this budget for anything to do with the street use fee. That doesn't mean the budget can't be amended later on this year. But we haven't even had a workshop or a discussion or a council meeting concerning that. So at this point. There is no such thing as a street use fee.
Okay, but.
It is a possibility in the future. We could also get a grant. That is another possibility, so there is, so we don't need. We we don't need to concentrate on that because we're here for this idol.
Yes, sir.
Not to look at all the potential possibilities of the future. Except for this budget, and that is what we're here to talk about, and I understand you want to explain to them all and do all that stuff. But we have to stay on task.
Okay, but when we first started with the proposed budget, Mister Caruth brought it up, that's where it came from. So that's where everyone got it because it was brought up.
And I get it, but it's not in this document.
I understand that.
Do you see anywhere in the budget where there will be funds that we could put towards the sh- the streets?
Y'all, I, as far as what I understood.
Y'all have looked at this very, very well. Uh, do you see funds in the budget that we could move somewhere without? Making another department, uh, it's called Robin Peter, uh, Robin Paul. Uh, it's called Robin Peter, uh, Rob and Paul to play, Dave Peter. So that's, that's what's been going on. We're trying to fix that.
Right, which, which.
This, at what point does it stop?
Yeah, that, that brings up one question.
At what point does it stop? Okay.
We haven't started it, so.
We'll talk to Mr. Tanner right now. Mr. Boudreau can have the mic next.
Yes, sir. Uh, so I have another question, uh, as far as the budget goes. And it has to do with tax rates, so I think it applies and we can discuss it. Uh, uh, the county, again, I know the county is the one that sets the appraisals, but the county has set the appraisals for the last four years at an astronomical increasing amount. And I mean, it's hit people, it's hit my wallet hard. Like, really hard. I didn't buy my house expecting to pay an extra five hundred dollars a month from the tax increases. With that being said, the amount of tax, that when the taxes, the appraisal value is increased on the house, but whether it's by the county or anybody else. Y'all's tax rate stays the same, but with the appraisal value going up, y'all now have generated double and triple the end, the revenue from the tax rate.
That's not.
Over the last four years.
So when they come out with a new, the new revenue like is on here, that is to generate the same exact amount of money from the year before with the same property values used from the year before, am I correct, Lamar? So we had to set a new tax rate, even though it increased funds, the tax rate actually still went down. Now, this year, it went up, or actually it still went down, but it's not down as far as it could have been. But those increases were less than a three percent, which are the voter approval. So just like everyone here was hit with inflation and gas prices and construction costs and everything goes up. Those, those same increases still hit this city. So those small, less than three percent increases that we received which is, we, we had to go to seven percent to get an extra five hundred thousand. So the small increases that we got by using the uh, less than voter approval tax rate, basically covered our costs for inflation bare. That is cost, the extra cost for diesel, the extra cost for water, the extra cost for construction labor, the extra cost for salaries and insurance increases and vehicles. So where you're saying we've made all this money, we barely covered the increased costs that everyone else sees from the same, the same thing around. So we didn't triple our money. Because our tax revenue, the, the tax revenue, I believe last year's revenue probably was what?
Are you talking about twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three, the difference from twenty twenty-two was probably.
Three and a half.
That the tax rate itself was three point four nine seven.
That's correct.
Uh.
Percent.
So that would probably come out to a little less than three hundred thousand.
That's a fair statement, yeah.
Well, the tax rate this year.
We got more money last year at three hundred thousand. So employee increases, increased costs, increased construction costs, that eats that up immediately. What we've done is we've taken their hard line and looked at it and said, we gotta quit treading water and barely getting by just to cover the increased costs because we had failing infrastructure. Because we need a bank balance, because we need that safety net of three to four months.
Yeah.
We looked at this and said, well, if you look at the entire picture, we went from a red line eight, eight years ago to a black line. When I got on council, we were seven hundred fifty thousand-ish red line at the audit. And I believe last year we were plus four hundred thousand over the course of about seven, eight years. So it's, it's making its comeback. But this is an opportunity for us to stop treading water, give ourselves a life raft that also provides for infrastructure recovery. This is why this is so important. And I understand it sucks that it hits all at one time. But we can't keep treading water. We have to make, make moves in order to get ahead of the game.
And I understand that, and I'm tired of driving down roads that are beating my suspension up and that are beating me up.
I'll tell you, Mr. Thompson, then I believe as a council and with Mr. Cruz's uh guidance here, we've put an emphasis on water and sewer and drainage. Roads will be next. We're working on, but we're trying not to do it all at one time. I, I, we hear, we hear the concerns. We don't like the potholes. We want better roads. The ditches need to be dug out. The toilets don't flush when it rains. My drainage doesn't flow. We hear them all and we hear them and we, we look at it. And right now our concern is to not have to pay fines for being out of uh TECQ on the wastewater, on the water plant. We want you to be able to flush your toilets. We're gonna patch the roads the best we can until we can get money to fix them. So we're, we have a plan, but it takes money.
And we appreciate, we appreciate it, and we appreciate that y'all are finally, well, I wanna say finally.
You can say finally.
But it, it, at least on paper, it looks like finally the money's gonna be made, but it's just the last fi- at least five years that I've lived here, it's just up until now, it just doesn't seem like anything was being done to, like, why wasn't half of this implemented two years ago? And then half now, towards just a little at a time. You don't, you don't just break someone down at one time. You gotta, you gotta chop, you don't chop a tree down in one swing, Mayor. You chip away at it.
Mr. Thompson. I'm gon- I'm going to say this, we're neighbors. All of us are neighbors, aren't we neighbors? Okay, we're neighbors. So let's talk. The financial problems that we have, the problems with the wastewater treatment land that we have were made before I got on city council. I inherited all that because the past council administration, whatever you wanna call it, did not do their job. They didn't do their job. That's um Kyle Holger, uh Sidney Baden was on council, Bailey, uh Mr. Warren was on there. They didn't do their job. They didn't fix what they needed to fix. And so we have inherited, I have inherited this. And so I just want you to understand that, like in the last four years that I've been on city council, there has been a lot of trying to fix it and doing whatever we could. Now, we've had Hurricane Harvey money. And that fixed a lot of roads, uh, in Word Four. It fixed a lot of uh streets, excuse me, and it fixed other streets. Now we don't have the Hurricane Harvey money. So finding a way to pay for that, which is what I was told, the street usage fee would do. We would get debt, uh, we would borrow money to pay for the streets and use the street usage fee money coming in to pay for the debt, to fix the streets. And there have been times, and Mr. Cruz, you, you can speak to this, that we couldn't get the material to fix the streets. That went on for a while, didn't it?
Correct.
The state took all of the material and so, because I would call and say, uh, Thirty Second Streets were really bad. There's holes and stuff everywhere and Twenty Fifth Street and all these other different streets, we would call in and talk about it or, or, you know, make Mr. Cruz aware of it. Now remember, he hasn't been here during all that past. He wasn't responsible for the mismanagement.
I'm, I'm not blaming him.
I'm, I'm just saying, just so that we have a understanding, okay? So he's thinking outside of the box what should have been done previously and was not. And so now we're in this problem. Now we have this because the previous council wouldn't get up off their booties and fix it.
It just sucks because like I said last time, we've been paying the premium tax rate.
Oh, I know. I paid too.
To everybody else.
They went up on my.
There was nothing to show for it for the last four to five years. And here we are, increasing. So we've been paying a premium. We've been paying a premium tax rate compared to the other two cities that we compete with. And we're in worse condition than them. And Nederland is lowering their tax rate yet again.
Have industrial property taxes coming in that help pay for everything. We don't have that. So that's another. That's another thing that you have to look at.
That's, I can make two comments. One, uh, those two graphs up there. The top one shows the value over time, the, the taxable value over time. You see those last five bars on the right, you said you've lived here five years. You'll see that there's been a pretty big increase in taxable value considering the last five years. And you see how that compressed the tax rate last five years. Because of the relationship between taxable value and the tax rate is like a seesaw. One goes up, the other goes down. That's what the old truth and taxation calculation is about. So you see as the value went up, the tax rate went down. But it doesn't mean individual properties didn't see a, a bigger tax bill. But you see in the aggregate, that's what happened. The second thing that I wanna make clear is that every, the entire council fully understands the impact this can have on, on the community. That's we've had uh two or three, three or four slides uh in our workshops showing the impact of uh the tax rate, potential tax rate, the utility rates, all that.
Y'all are getting close to pressing people, middle-class America, out of their homes and roads.
Those individually, collectively, and then the uh uh cumulative tax rate from all the other entities that our citizens pay. They have paid attention to that throughout the entire process. And it's to their credit that they stood up and said, we know this is gonna be difficult, but we have to do it anyway because our systems are in such poor shape that if they fail, it's gonna be catastrophic failure. And it's gonna cost way more to fix it. We're gonna be fine. We will have development moratoriums. And that's gonna be far worse than anything that we're facing right now. So it's to the council's credit, that none of them, none of them have said, yeah, let, let's just tax the heck out of people. That, that has never been the attitude that I've seen with, and they've all been very concerned about the impact on, on the community. But they've had the courage to say that and say, we've gotta do it. They know that it's, they're doing it at their risk, political risk. But they're doing it anyway, because that's what needs to be done now. I can't speak to what's happened the last thirty years. All I know is what I see now and what needs to be done before all the wheels fall off.
Have you audited yourself, like personally, just gone back and looked at the books and everything of what has happened over the last ten, twenty, thirty years and where everything went wrong and where all the money went? And can you tell us what happened? Because somebody here knows. Somebody here was on council, somebody here was, you know, the mayor, you live here.
There's nothing, what's happened in the past has got us where we're at now.
Yeah, and the people wanna know what happened to the money that they, that they paid into the city.
Fingers and, and, and all that. It does no.
No, we're, we're not trying to win favor, but they want to know, it's their money. If something happened to your money, you'd wanna know where it went.
Right.
Mr. Thompson.
So why would you not tell us?
It's not, I wasn't here then.
You've proud of yourself on living here for forty something years?
Yes, I'm coming, being on council and seeing the numbers of where all this goes. This man right here has showed me more numbers than I've seen in, in the last three years that we went over budgets. Methodically has, has went through these numbers and showed us prior to that, I've never seen anything like that. It made it very understanding and showed us more. There were times that we were uh discussing things and Lamar would uh, would be told, Lamar, we can move that money from this uh account to this account. We, we can handle that. So, okay. Lamar done what he was supposed to do and we, we took it to, everything's good. We've got the money. In reality, we robbed Peter to pay Paul. That's where, where things had, had been going, just like the wastewater plant. That plant's what, some twenty-five years old?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Normally in a refinery, and everybody's familiar with this, these units run for so long and then they crash. So what they do is they put a maintenance schedule together where they roll out this equipment over time. That's never happened to that plant in twenty-five years. Never happened to it. It should have been. That's poor management. So now we're having to deal with that. What they've done, it's either put Band-Aids on it, we've had one hell of a workforce that's been maintaining and keep it going. So now we're, we're dealing with, how can we manage and, and get through it? There, we, we passed uh some uh, uh I, I guess monies to, to take care of some of this. It's gonna take time because it's been, been overlooked for, for twenty-five years. So all of this is hitting us, and I understand where you're at. I totally agree with it. I don't like it, but this is what we've been dealt and, and we're working as diligent as we can and with your input, the other people's input, it, it helps us, okay? We understand where, where your complaint is. There's a bunch of complaints, so we're looking at all of this stuff. Where's the money? And that's what we're trying to, to figure out. How can we manage it? And where it doesn't put any more of a burden on, on the taxpayer that already has.
So that would.
Mr. Thompson. When I got on council, and I forgot what year it was, it was, I guess, the second year. I demanded a forensic audit of this city's finances. I, it took me a long time to get it on the agenda. Nobody wanted to vote on it. Forensic audit of finances so we could find out where the money went, what was going on. It went to council. I voted yes. It was voted down. Not to have a forensic audit. If we had, we would be able to know where certain monies went. Now, the past administration would not, they would not vote to fix that wastewater plant because every time it came up in subject or whatever with city council, one of them was running for reelection and they didn't want it to interfere with them getting reelected. And Mr. Cruz was right. I'm sitting here, I'm going through all this. I, I got two hours of sleep last night. This entire weekend, I've done nothing but budget ever since it has come up. And I love budget season. To me, it's fun. But all of this, I read and I study and I study and I study. And all of this, I am affected just like you. I am middle America. I don't make two, three hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm just like you. These taxes affect me too. The appraisal district appraised my house for fifty thousand dollars more this year. Those taxes I pay too. The water rates I pay too, and I've had problems with the water. Uh, me being billed with water. I've had problems last year and just got two last month and this month. The usage that they say I've used is overly ridiculous. So all of these things that y'all are experiencing, I go through too. I, I have to pay the excuse me, I have to pay the property taxes, but these, the council that was here before, Kyle Holger, Sidney Baden, Bailey, uh, Mr. Warren was a year and a half on it. They would not fix the problems.
Oh, forget Karen Ties also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, thank you for telling me. Uh, I'm trying to remember, Karen Ties was on it also, okay? So the administration did not handle it correctly, but I wanted a forensic audit. And I got it on the agenda barely, and it was voted down. So that's where we're at.
That's frustrating.
Yes, it is.
Because what everybody's wondering, after what you said, where everybody, they just band-aided the water department. They band-aided the roads, they band-aided this and that. That would make you think that if they weren't spending the money required to keep those things running properly, that they would have had, the savings would have been astronomical. If they weren't spending the money to completely revamp or redo roads or revamp a water department, all that money should be sitting on the bank.
Study wasn't done by Schneider and presented to us on how to repair it, but it was also voted down by council, this council.
Yes, now let's talk about that, okay? Schneider is a really good company. They're a very good company, excellent. Now that started before I got on city council. Schneider Electric got started before.
To fix the wastewater plant was started before this council took place.
Twenty twenty.
And then this council turned it down.
Well, let's, let's talk about that because their first, they, they did presentations, we had workshops on it. And they wanted to do it for twenty-seven million dollars. That was a note because we figured there were other ways to get the wastewater treatment plant fixed or get it started being fixed and then we could go from there where it wouldn't cost twenty-seven million dollars. Okay, because we had just okayed the fire station, the new fire station.
Wasn't the fire station paid with a grant?
EDC money.
EDC pays the note on the fire station.
One year.
Yes. Okay, so then they came back with fifteen million or something like that. Now, we wanted a different way of doing it, but let me tell you what happens with that, okay? That contract was not signed by every council person. Every person that was on council at that time did not sign that contract. I asked a couple of them, did you know this, this, and this was in the contract? Nope, didn't know. It took me a month to get the complete contract so that I could read it and study it. Let me tell you, we had to send, we had to pay them a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars because of the work they did. Okay, I understand that. But let me tell you what else took place. This city administration, previous to me, gave away the intellectual property of the wastewater treatment plant. They gave it to Schneider. They didn't keep it. So if we were going to use it, we would have to pay Schneider to use it. Nobody looked at the contract. I read all of them. And the intellectual property for the wastewater treatment plant, which we could use now and not have to pay somebody else to do it again, we can't. So we paid them a hundred and forty-five thousand because they did the work that they were supposed to do. So it cost us a hundred and forty-five thousand and our intellectual property for the wastewater treatment plant. So we have to start over with all of that. But we wanted to do it a different way. So we have, Mr. Osley, is it one point three million we've been using or we had to use?
Painting in the COVID funds, one point six?
I'm sorry, one point six million for the wastewater treatment plant. That's what we have to start with. And one of our employees, he, he looked at all of it as a whole, you know, and he gave us, I think it was four different categories that we really needed to work on. And that's where we are putting that one point six million from what I know.
And then the water increase rates here also will generate seventeen million in order to water towers and do the rest of the work for them.
Paint the water towers?
Yeah, it's required.
So we're not talking about ZZ Talk getting painted outside of the water?
We're talking about just for corrosion or touch.
These, these are rules that we have to go by. We, we didn't make the laws for it. The laws were made by the state and, and
Right, I understand that.
So the, the watering rate increases generates a, uh, the way to pay for a debt of what is seventeen million, I believe it is.
That's the initial target.
Seventeen million, uh, that includes, uh, the work on the wastewater plant, uh, is it little stations and the water towers?
The water towers, for sure, we
Oh, I'm sorry, the pipe bursting. So the, the rates increase of the water in this will fund that seventeen million that we're going to be putting into the wastewater facility, the surrounding infrastructure, and to comply with the painting of the water tower.
Now, the seventeen million dollars in repairs, is, would you consider that a Band-Aid again, or is that significant repairs?
That is significant repairs.
Okay.
That would be close to what the final proposal of around twelve point one million from Schneider was.
To completely overhaul the water department?
Probably seventy-five percent.
I just want to make sure we're not, if it's going to cost us twenty-seven million.
Well, it's not twenty-seven, no.
If it would have cost us twenty-seven million or twenty-two million after you make some adjustments and, you know, cut some things out of a budget like everybody does, and we're going to spend seventeen million, I just want to make sure seventeen million isn't on repairs while we can get a full new water department.
Well, roughly about twelve million would be the repairs. And then you have pipe bursting and then you have the, uh, the water towers as well. And we did a presentation on that. I don't remember the exact numbers, but that is the, uh, upgrade of the grid removal, upgrade of the aeration systems, the software, uh, the automation, uh, for the instrumentation as well. And, uh, what's the last one? Uh, Troy, if you don't mind? Rear removal, headworks, which is the, uh, the aeration, believe. So it was the, it was the, the four critical infrastructure is what that twelve million would be geared towards.
Of course, the lower it's put off, the more expensive the towns.
And they don't really make all the replacement work for what we have.
Yeah, it's got, we gotta get new stuff. Uh, Mr. Osley, the EDC was created to pay the debt for the wastewater treatment plant or the water plant? Which one was it?
Water.
The waste.
The wastewater.
In ninety-three, it was created to fund the finances, the construction of the existing wastewater plant. The painting of the water towers kind of gave you an idea. I know cities can generate money off of naming rights. Is that something that legally y'all can do?
I mean, yeah, we could, we could sell a sponsorship, and but you'd have to, you still have to do the corrosion painting.
No, I, yeah, I understand that.
You can at least sell a sponsorship, yes.
Is that what they did? It was at the ZZ Talk and, um, Duck, I forget the Duck Hall. Company, Sure Shot.
Sure Shot.
Is that, that generated money? It wasn't just something that the city wanted to do?
Work once and pay for the painting, I'm assuming. I don't think it cost the city any money. But that's not the kind of painting that we're
Right, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Osley, the tax rate, the proposed tax rate, uh, you and I talked about this on the phone. Now, the tax rate has the maintenance and operation in it and the, um,
Interest and sinking.
Interest and sinking, which is the debt that we have. So those two things together make the, the proposed tax rate. This tax rate is less than what we thought it would be, but it's less than last year, right?
That is correct, on the absolute terms, yes.
Yes, it is less than what was charged last year. Um, see, how much less?
Point zero seven, seven, six, six, point zero zero seven, seven, six, six.
So it's less than what the, the tax rate was last year. That gave me a little bit of hope. It just did, because at first it started out with something that I said, oh, Lord, no, we can't do this. And then we have the worksheet, perfect. The appraisal district sends this. And if you want your head to spin, here's something to study. Okay, and then on the back, they tell us, that's me, and then on the back, they tell us, um, you know, the, what you've got here for the proposed tax rate. They tell us all this information, you know, what the de minimis is, what voter approval tax rate is. But the tax rate that we're proposing is less than it was last year. Now, it may not sound like a lot, but when you're talking how much per one hundred dollars on your appraisal, it can add up. But look, I have, I have to pay it too. I'm middle, middle of the road, just like you are. And I have to, I have to pay the property taxes too, whatever rate the city, you know, comes up with. But all of this is a, is, is very detailed by the appraisal district. And so when we looked at this and at first the, the de minimis rate was stuck out there as that's what we're going to use, I, the first thing I said was, people, growth's not going to handle, they're, they're not going to like this, they're not going to take this. They don't like, this is not going to work. And so we had to wait until the appraisal district, didn't they, uh?
Certify.
Yes, they had to certify it, which means, you know, things can change before we get the final final percentages and final rate. And so the one that we're voting on tonight is less than last year.
It still generates more money.
And the five hundred thousand dollars it's supposed to generate, that's, that's right, right? And I mean, that's what was first said, it's going to generate five hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so what are we going to use that money on?
Is that to basically for reserves, to replenish the reserves, or is that going to be for projects? Or everything?
It goes into your whole time.
Because it's the general fund.
How much are y'all projected to have in savings at the end of the budget year? With these increases?
There's no way to answer that. It's, if you tell me how many people were hiring or leave, I can give you a logical estimate.
If everything's if everything stays the same and y'all do, and the cost of repairs that y'all have planned and everything like that, that y'all have budgeted for, what would be the amount in savings at the end of the fiscal year?
So, you said balanced budget correctly. So a balanced budget, we, we've set and earmarked everything for expenditure. Our savings comes from working the budget to benefit by not spending as much through potential savings or potential grants, or we worked faster than we thought we could have, or we collected more fees than we had. That's where we work the budget as the citizens or the employees of the city work. But we have to, we have to have a balanced budget. Everything has to be earmarked for something. Now, we used to use a capital outlay, which was the purchase of future giant vehicles. We would put things in there. I believe we're not doing that right now, so. And we budget, for budgeting purposes, we budget conservatively on revenues and more aggressively on expenses, so at the end of the year.
Hopefully you don't spend as much and hopefully you make more. Well, obviously this is not something that we get to vote on, we just get to speak for instant. So with all that being said, I think a lot of people are willing to buckle down in hopes that this city makes a comeback, so to speak. But y'all have to be the ones to make sure that that happens. If y'all are going to ask for more or less money, you know, whatever, however it's worded and whatever it comes out to be, if y'all are going to increase the tax rate or increase the utility fee and y'all, y'all have a plan that this is going to be, you know, this is going to be good in the end, you know, we're, we're going to pay for it now and praise for it later, so to speak. Then we can task each and every one of y'all in holding up these promises that y'all are making.
Yes.
And we hope that this city can make a return because where it's at now obviously is unacceptable. You know, the money that's made in the city, you know, as far as the residents, you know, a lot of people work in their refineries. We all know what kind of money gets made out there. The tax rates, the, you know, all that stuff we've talked about. The city should look a lot better and function a lot better than it does. Including, you know, employees or departments being shorthanded.
That was also mentioned is, uh, with increased pay, we expect increased service as well across the board.
As long as the operations are running smoothly. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, this is not something I take lightly. I spend hours going over this and I think, I sit and I think about it and I study it for hours. It's kept me up at night knowing what we have to do. And even though I'm a regular residential citizen like you are, I think about the people that are on fixed income. I think about the families that have three and four children anymore. I think about those people that, you know, the parents are having to work three or four jobs. I think about that. And I don't like it any more than anyone else does. But I want my toilet to flush. I want my water to, to work.
Especially if you're in a, a business. Exactly. If you have a business and the toilets don't flush, well, that business is not going to stay in there.
Yeah.
Mr. Holmes, do you have another question?
Can I put my name on the in favor part too? I know you covered that already. Let me, can I ask a question? Can you go to page four on this and make sure I understand this, this absolute cost on, on the agenda? We're, we're talking about percentage values, um.
Page four.
Yeah, page, no, uh, no, page, page four on the memo, yes, I'm sorry. That covers, covers the, uh, the topic that we're on. I think we're still on the for or against the proposed tax.
Page four is not.
Page three, page four, I'm looking at the memo, it's right. The agenda, excuse me, the agenda, the meeting agenda. That's what you have on the, uh, page, right? This is probably a Mr. Osley question.
Mr. Osley, smile.
So, um, yeah, just, uh, just scroll down.
You talking about this page? The front page?
No, if you continue scrolling on the agenda.
This is the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, that right there. So, so, um, Mr. Thompson, uh, said what we all know, um, inflation's happened. Uh, property evaluations are going up. Our city wants to raise the, raise the tax. So if you scroll down to the bottom, there's, there's like an example of um, this twenty-three, twenty-four table. So it talks about the property value of an average home in growth. You know, from a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. So as far as the added tax we would pay potentially on average, we're talking about sixty-five dollars a year? Okay, so we're talking about sixty-five dollars a year, five or six dollars a month. One happy, happy meal?
One, one star of the day.
Okay, oh, must be the little one. And, uh, I, I know you guys are going to vote on the, the rate increase for the water. And I know you guys have put that study out there, it's a five-year rate increase, talking about fifteen percent, and there's a lot of numbers thrown around. And I appreciate you guys doing the job of putting average residential user, you know, so we're talking about five-ish dollars a month or four thousand, well, like four thousand gallons, is that somewhere in the ballpark? You guys remember that?
Well, maybe a little more than that, maybe it's more than that, several.
Yeah, five, six, seven bucks?
It's, I think it's around three dollars for the minimum, which is a thousand gallons.
Yeah.
And then it would be from a thousand one to forty-nine ninety-nine. Uh, there's another increase of about twenty-five percent per thousand gallons. So you're looking at another
It's, it's in a chart in the study.
Probably for your, it looks probably closer to seven or eight dollars.
We're talking about seven, seven, eight dollars for water and wastewater to continue getting the funding that we're talking about.
Well, your sewer is going to be for residential, it's a flat fifteen, fifteen dollars.
Yeah, that's, is the chart in there, I'm sorry.
A little bit.
We're talking about less than ten bucks a month to, to help fund our water system. We're talking about less than seven bucks a month for, for taxes. So net, you know.
Which understandably.
Seventeen bucks is a lot for a fixed income.
Eighty dollars a month, this is a lot.
We're talking about average users, um, but my net, everybody's net goes up that much and, you know, we still pay that, so. All right, I just wanted to make sure I got the round numbers on there. We're, we're talking about a lot of numbers, but we're talking about on average sixty-five dollars a year, not a month. We're talking about on average residential user, less than ten bucks, something like that.
If you, if you go to the, um, I think either one of the budget workshops online, you look at the, the video and the, uh, the printed material. There's a chart in there called Rome City Government. And it goes over like ten or twelve years. And it evens, it normalizes all the data across that time, so you can, can see from one year to the next what the actual impact is, because it's hard to really gauge if like you and Mr. Thompson have pointed out, you know, if it's tax rate stays the same, but your values go up, it's, it's hard to tell what, how, what money's actually coming out of your wallet. That chart really allows you to kind of pair over time what that impacted.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll look for some of that information to accompany me to the workshop and couldn't find anything, uh, sorry.
That's in your, um,
It, it may be somewhere, I just missed it, Mr. Ross. I watched, I watched, I kind of skimmed over the video for the section, so. Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about round numbers, six, seven bucks a month for taxes, seven, eight bucks a month for water, you know, fifteen dollars.
Thank you. Any of the citizens who wish to speak against their request?
Uh, Barbara at Eddington, thirty-eight hundred Russell. Um, I wrote everything down because I forget and I started to write it down. Um, I wanted to say two things that I didn't write down. Um, Mr. Cruz, how long have you been here now? About a year? Um, I wanted to say two things that I didn't write down. Um, Mr. Cruz, how long have you been here now? About a year?
Started October thirtieth.
Okay, so I'm just, um. Personally, I listened to what everybody said and I blame the city council because you've been here, you've been here, you've been here, and you've been here for at least four years. Okay, y'all have known what's going on. You may not have known them any gritty, but you've known. So you can sit here and blame the council before you, but bottom line is, y'all knew. Mr. Cruz came in and he started making changes. And you know what? I appreciate that from everybody. I appreciate y'all finally getting on and finally getting it taken care of. I've known for a very long time that we're gonna be paying a lot of money. And I think it's gonna continue to go up year after year, and I personally am prepared for that. I don't think the citizens knew that. I don't think they even realize right now, a lot of them, that this is a five-year plan. So the next year, your water's gonna go up. The year after that, your water's gonna go up and the year after that, and then it's gonna be reevaluated. I think, I don't think they realize that we need millions and millions of dollars and not all of that is gonna be generated by water and sewer. We're gonna have to take out other loans. So I just want to say that right off the top. I'm gonna talk about, um, and I'll be very brief. And I brought water because I have a cold, but, um, I'm gonna talk about the Texas tax code. I don't know if y'all have it in front of you. I have it. If you'd like the copy, I brought one for each of you so you can follow what I wanna say. If anybody wants it.
Yeah.
Okay, let me give you those. Would you like? Barbara, you're right. I've been here for four years, but you have to remember this. Changed. And that made the difference. I understand that. Texas Tax Code, Chapter twenty-six is a section of the Texas state law that obligates the city of Grove's. Designated officer on floor to give notice to the governing body as well as the taxpayers of their intentions of a tax rate for the fiscal year. The required information that must be listed under Texas law in the notice about tax rates is listed in the tax code, and I gave each of y'all a copy. Specifically, Section twenty-six oh four titled Submission of Role to Governing Body, No New Revenue and Voter Approval Tax Rates. Letter E requires this be done by August seventh. Number three requires a schedule of the taxing unit's debt obligations. A is the amount of principal and interest that will be paid to service the taxing unit's debts in the next year from property tax revenue. Unlawful information given by the finance officer that does not meet that section. They, under that, the notice. Twenty twenty CO series, twenty twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and seventy-nine, nine fifty total. That's for the fire station and that is not the property tax that is paid by EDC funds. It was voted on by the employees and that should not be listed on here because that was not property tax, it was sales tax. Adding in parentheses, like the finance officer did, the words. Or additional sales tax revenues inapplicable is not language prescribed under the law. Further, in Section twenty-six oh four E, stating that notice of tax rates be given by August seventh. You have not lawfully done that as well since you unlawfully claimed in the posted notice. That property taxes will be used to pay that certificate of obligation series twenty twenty. Other violations in the Tax Code, Chapter twenty-six. The notice must include the following statement in bold typeface. And then I listed the statement, visit texas.gov property taxes. Also regarding the statement that's required according to, to Section twenty-six oh four E three. The statement described by subsection E two one must include a heading that is in bold. Capital letters and type larger than used in the other provisions of the notice. The statement is not in bold. On the notice about twenty twenty-four tax rates and the statement that is prescribed, prescribed by Texas law is not fully included in the notice as stated. In Section twenty-six oh four E three. The notice must include. Twenty-six oh four E two dash two. A statement that the property owner may request from the county assessor for the county in which the property is located. This notice includes no such statement as required by Texas law. In Section twenty-six oh four E two three. The notice must include the name, address, and telephone number of the county assessor for the county in which the property is located. The notice listed does not include the phone number of the county assessor. The notice must also include instructions on how a property owner may register on the appraisal district's internet website. If the appraisal district maintains an internet website to have notifications regarding updates to the property tax base. This is nowhere to be found on the notice about twenty twenty-four tax rates as prescribed by Texas law. Due to violation of the required notice of tax rates under the law. Section twenty-six oh four, as outlined, the citizens of Grove are entitled to file an injunction against the city on this and any new tax rate. This has happened before. I think y'all all remember it. The laws were not followed. I've included the statutes for you to look at. I've included the law. From now on, it's up to y'all to figure out what you're gonna do. Because if you pass this, it's unlawful and we can file an injunction.
So your, your first page that we have here, that's on the city website.
Yes, it is. Yeah, I printed it up this morning to make sure that hadn't been changed or anything. So. I just want, this has happened before.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, I think a lot of people do. And, uh, I think that. Council needs to really. Follow up on who's doing their business. But that's all I have to say. I'm not gonna hold it. I can't speak much longer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens who wish to speak against the request?
Well, Ben, I got called out. I go get him. Michael Boudreaux, six, six seventeen Jefferson. I don't have any questions. Is that a statement? Um. Thirteen thousand seventy-five adults in the city of Grove, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four of those are senior citizens. They're on fixed incomes. Going up. Understand that, uh, if we do not go up on taxes, that we don't have any money. We don't have any money. We can't. Uh, keep the city running. And I think I heard last week, the week before last, somebody said they didn't want to become part of Fort Naches. That's not gonna happen. We'll become part of Fort Arthur if, uh. If that's to happen, so. Uh. I apologize for speaking out of line earlier. But that's all that I have. Uh. We have. A lot of people that. Are on fixed incomes and they're just not gonna be able to afford all this at one time. Um, that's, that's just seniors. That's not including single, single parents that have kids that are trying to. Keep your kids fed and clothed and, and all of that. Right? So.
Of course, senior citizens should be, should be getting this senior tax rates. Number sixty-five tax rate.
From the appraisal district.
We're going up, we're, we're going up, uh, ten percent, almost eleven percent taxes on, uh. The household tax, the, the, the county tax. Plus we're going up, uh, the water bills and all this, you know, and the, the fee that nobody wants to speak about. But I understand the, I understand the question earlier where last week, the week before last, it was up there that said that. We were gonna pay fifty, sixty thousand dollars for a study or something like that right there. It's just money that I don't see that we need to spend. There's a lot of. Every dollar, every dollar at this point right now has to be. Controlled. Uh, I mean, uh. Light up stop signs at a four-way stop, put a four-way stop light. You know, uh, bouncy houses, stuff like that. That's wasteful spending. In my household, if we're eating macaroni and cheese for a week, we're, we're not buying, we're not buying beer. You know what I mean?
Um, Mr. Boudreaux, that bouncy house, that's, um, for the activity building for children. Um, the bouncy house, cause I asked about this when we were going through it. Um. People will use it. They will rent it. And that rental money will pay for the bouncy house. It's for their birthday parties and things like that. They wanna have them at the activity building. This, um.
So are, are we? Do, do we actually get any income for the activity building itself? Do they rent the building out itself for birthday parties and such like that right there?
Yeah.
Yes, and I rent the sign out from.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
And the bouncy house is a direct response to market requests to have it.
Okay, well, I mean, my, my statement is that every, every penny, every, every penny that we spend needs to be. Make sure it goes to the right spot.
I agree.
Agreed, yes. Um, so you're saying you're not for the. Tax rate?
No, we're, we're, we're gonna have to, we're, we're gonna have to pay. I mean, that is what it is. And we can call it, well, whoever. Whoever's fault, whatever names that we're not supposed to mention, all that, we can, we can say, we, 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 we can call it whatever. Taxes are gonna have to go up. There's gonna have to be fees, otherwise. Not gonna be Grove. It's gonna be Fort Arthur. And that is what it is.
Um.
I mean, it's un, to me, it's unfortunate. I feel, I, I feel that it's unfortunate that, um. We didn't get justice in this, that somebody is walking their dogs when they probably should be in jail. For the stuff that they done.
I cannot say.
So we, we have yearly audits. The money's all accounted for. Nothing was. Stolen.
No, no. I understand, I understand, I understand, I understand nothing was stolen. And, and I, I, I understand that. But the, the money was squandered. All right, we, I mean, look, I, I, I'll say it. The, the firefighters deserve a nice place to be. They, they're there twenty-four hours a day, however many days a week. I believe that's a little big for the city of Grove. We have nothing here. It's nothing but residential. We have nothing here.
And our firefighters feel more cause than the other two cities combined.
The other two cities, Fort Naches, you go, you can go down Noll Street in Fort Naches and they have more on one street than we have in the entire city. I mean, they can afford it. They have, they have more, they, they have more, uh. More businesses to take. I mean, they, they, they have to have more firefighters, more, more trucks and more equipment, bigger firehouse. I mean.
Well. In inquiring every single year about the budget. And just throughout the year, different things that come up. Um, I have been told, told repeatedly, and this is everywhere. That regardless, the budget is going to go up every year, regardless. It has to. Because it has to cover the employee, um. Employee money, their, their, their paycheck. It has to cover, you know, the rising of the prices for the, the things that. Our people use, you know, the street stuff, um. Equipment, the running of the equipment, uh, dumping.
It, it, it's great.
It's going to every single year, regardless. And I don't like that answer anymore than anybody else, but.
But it's every single year and now we're gonna play catch-up. We're gonna play ten-year catch-up. In a year. That's, that's what I'm, I'm sure that's what everybody's mad about. Right? I mean, it's just, they're, they're, they're mad because they're having to play catch-up.
Oh, I understand.
Once. And there's no, and there's no plan, there's no plan to. To, to, to get us there. Gradually.
Okay, we have changed. City managers. We have a new city manager. He's still called the new city manager, even though he's been here almost a year. You're the new city manager. And he has come with a lot of different ideas. And he has given.
It, it sounds like, sounds like he's doing a good job before.
Council. He has given us more information than we ever had since I've been on city council. And I've had to pull teeth and fuss and continually ask for information to be able to get it. Until Mr. Cruz came, Mr. Cruz here. He gives us the information we need. He was very open about. All of this. I knew how bad finances were. Yes, Barbara's right about that. But the administration. Was different then. And I'm under an NDA. You can't say anything more.
I understand. And, and, and we, 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 we.
They silenced me.
We, 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 we keep hearing, we keep hearing that. And that's, that's a tough field to swallow. That, that. We're going to be. Paying for. Somebody else's mistakes and, and I, I, and I understand. I, I understand. I understand what you're saying. Same way with big government, big government, all the way to little government.
You would do the same thing and you would have to. That's, that's why.
You're right.
I have broad shoulders.
You're right.
Where people can yell at me and holler at me and complain and everything. And I understand and I'm fine with that. But in the end, I have to make a really. Hard, tough decision that I not only have to live with making it, but it affects me financially also.
But, you know, other than the cities, senior citizens here, there's a lot of. Single. Mothers with children.
Yeah.
That can't afford it either. I mean, they're struggling now to make it.
I was a single mother with a child. I raised a child by myself. I was a single mother.
I have a ninety, ninety-three-year-old dad that still lives here in Grove. Both my babies is his age. Me and my siblings subsidize his household. Somebody made it. And so.
So it, I'm just, just something to go to bed on.
Sure.
Okay.
As a legitimate complaint, I understand it.
Any other citizens who wish to speak against the request?
Hi, I'm Nancy Segers. There's not a pen. I can't read one. And I'm sixty-five hundred thirty-second street.
I got it.
Rose. Pen? That, okay. I wanted to ask, uh, about the raises that. I know everybody likes raises. But. Where is it starting at, at the top? You know, who's getting these? Is it the basic employees? Is it the department heads? Is it the city manager?
Everybody who's not under a contract.
That, that's not.
And who hasn't topped out.
Okay. Also then, you're wanting to give them a five percent raise, right?
That is a step raise, which is a predetermined amount that is put into the hiring papers.
Okay.
And they get that every two years until they reach maximum pay for their position.
Okay. Because I know a lot of businesses that you don't get raises.
On the cold years, we have that option.
All right, but next year you do, you have that option not to give raises. And I do know that they don't make the same money as employees at the refineries and all that. But still, when you're at a tight budget. Then you've got to look at that and all, and see that. You know, like I'm just saying, I worked at a place five years. We had frozen wages. We just didn't get raises. And we liked our jobs. I think most of the people at the city probably liked their jobs and all of them. But a lot of things, I think too, is I think it needs more supervision. Cause when they patch, the patch truck comes around, they don't patch that good. And all, and I don't know who the supervisor is, but I think they need to follow up on those things. And those, those are things like you said. We lost trust in y'all. That's the whole thing. We really did. And you know, once trust is broken, it's hard to get it back. So y'all are gonna have to really. Show us. That we can trust y'all again. Because we do not wanna go into Port Arthur.
Oh, no.
No, we are not. And all. So, and thank you for your remarks.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other citizens who wish to speak against the request?
Um.
One more call. Any other citizens who wish to speak against the request? Okay.
You know, might as well. Move all this way. I'm just missing all this meat. Kobe Taylor, thirty-five fifty-five Cleveland Avenue. Um. Kobe Taylor, thirty-five fifty-five Cleveland Avenue. Um, oh. Right here in a minute. I think it's distracting, right? While you're trying to talk to people, looking at, uh, to this young lady's statement about wages. So I understand that you have a step program. We work in, I work for an industrial construction company based out of Beaumont, and I can tell you that when COVID hit, I don't know how many of y'all watched what US Congress was trying to do, but at that time, they're trying to give themselves a raise. And guess who votes on their raise? Them. Not us, them. So it is something to look at. I understand what you said about coming in the next year, possibly two, about halting. I understand everybody wants to make money. Everybody's got to provide for a family. I'm not gonna pick on the single dad or the single mom, but we're all providing. So when we look at this, and these numbers are big numbers to people who make in the thirty thousand dollar range to the five hundred thousand or more range, they're numbers. They're our money. Y'all are paid through our money. The considerations of what we have to do to be able to have a viable and vibrant city, we understand. Otherwise, we'd also be in tents and horses and carriage. None of us want to go there. We have a lot of things that are to be proud of. We understand we're not, we're agencies that have a nice front door access to the world over there. But things are getting progressable. I just want to make sure we stay on that narrow path, that we're not deviating off of that, just because, hey, we do have individuals that are moving into this area. Houses are being built, newer subdivisions, newer houses, property taxes are helping maybe keep that life raft visible. But at the end of the day, it's our money. Keep it in perspective, because at one point in time, y'all weren't sitting there. You were over here, and you were looking at somebody to help. This isn't about help. It's about what we're doing together, because y'all depend on us as well. If ten thousand people all of a sudden decided to move out of here, it would impact everybody. That's not what we want to get to by any means. So just take that in perspective as we move forward. I'm not here, I'm not here to go to the tennis match back and forth. I'm not here to make a political statement. I'm just, when I watched during COVID and all these people were getting fired, and US Congress put on there to give themselves raises, raises that would impact their lives forever, and we would be accountable for that, this is the same type of deal, especially when you're gonna possibly live here for the rest of your life. We'll keep it in perspective. That's all I'm asking. I think you've done tremendous amount of work comparable to who was there before, okay? But you also have a lot of targets on your shoulders, okay? And, uh, I don't know any of y'all personally. And not saying I don't want to, but at the end of the day, y'all are here to make our city the best that it can be. Y'all have the power with the funds from us. Cool? We're all on the same page. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens who wish to speak against the request? Any other citizens who wish to speak against the requests? All right, we will revert back to number three, which is the council member portion. Mr. Edgins?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ford. Um, I said a lot during all of that, uh, all of the citizens coming up and talking. I said a lot about it. With, but I need to ask, we need to know, because this has happened before. So with Mrs. Eddington coming up here and giving us this information, um, unfortunately, Mr. Monk's not able to be with us today, um, giving us this information, don't you think we ought to, we ought to research this first before we do anything else?
In fact, you can go ahead and approve it tonight, and we can research it, and if it needs to be redone, we still have time to redo it.
Okay, but she was saying, and she gave us the little pages here, that if we approve it, it's illegal. So this is where, you know, it gets. It gets, I'm not sure.
We can approve it tonight, and we can research it this week.
Okay, but if it's illegal and we approve it.
I, I don't believe Ms. Eddington has a JD. I, I don't know where she got this.
I'm asking because I have to. I mean, I have to ask. I remember when Suzanne walked up here with, you weren't here. It was a, it was a show. And it was, uh, like, I think twelve or fifteen bullet points, and it was, uh, given out to us. And it was the same thing that was, that this is, just along the same lines, let me say that. So I, I kept getting promised certain things with that, and, um, I never could get an answer on it. Because I wanted to know what was, what was.
It won't take long to verify.
No, I'm not saying you wouldn't do that. I know you would do that.
It, it won't take long to verify. It'll take it, you know, anything. Then in that instance, I would like to ask, what ramifications does it impose on us if we don't approve it tonight?
Now, we have till the twenty-sixth?
What's the calendar selected?
We will have to announce at the end of this public hearing the date on which the vote will take place.
It'll be the twenty-sixth.
It'll be whatever vote, whatever date council decides to do, but there will be notices and you have to, other issues.
How many hours?
Seventy-two, huh?
For the public hearing, but there'll also be publication constraints as well. We'll have to redo the.
Does that throw us behind on any other legal bits that we know?
Yes, it does.
Also, you, you have to remember, you have to run that on reconciled statutory requirements, but also the, uh, charter and the publication, uh, notification requirements between those two, and that's what makes it, and the publication, uh, schedule from the page. Between those three, so. Just advance the.
Has Mr. Monk approved all of this? And he had seen all this, uh, going down.
That is correct, and these schedules prepared by the Tep County Tax Assessor Office.
Repeat that.
Mr. Monk has reviewed these notices, and these notices were, were prepared by the county tax assessor office. They're the ones with the software.
The tax, tax assessor's office.
They supply the information. They put it into their software program, and it prepares these schedules.
Copy the text of the notice came directly from the tax assessor office. That is correct.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that leaves us. I understand we can come back. It's, it is said that we can come back after we approve it. I don't know about you, but I wouldn't do well in jail. So. I just wouldn't.
There, there is no negative, nothing negative until we implement the budget.
Well, what about, um, what about if, if what Mrs. Eddington says is correct? Then what about the state? Would the state, um, make us pay fees or something like that? How, then how would we reconcile?
Well, but if, if what she said is correct, then we have to go back and re, redo all the notification and this whole process again. Well, that means the county was wrong too. Yes, the county was wrong, because they prepared the notice. Which means probably every entity in Jefferson County is wrong.
So in other words.
If we, if we approved it, and we're deemed okay, then our timeline stays intact. If we approve it, and there's a change that needs to be made, we start our timeline again, and we make the changes. And, and if it makes, makes you comfortable, as, as soon as we can can confirm what Mrs. Eddington says is correct, we can hold a special meeting within seventy-two hours and revoke your approval tonight, if that makes everybody feel comfortable. And then we can reschedule all the notifications and restart the process. But if you prove it tonight, that keeps us on schedule if, um, it's determined that everything's done correctly. But if you don't do it tonight, then that automatically puts us under the gun.
But is the twenty-sixth the last day that we have to vote on all of this? The tax rate, the maintenance operation, all of this, the budgeting call?
Of August? No, it's not the last day. We have until September thirtieth.
We have until September thirtieth?
That's correct.
So we could table this, get that settled?
That's gonna be contended on a lot of qualifications as far as, uh, increases and notices and the those type of issues. And basically, the, the calendar will have to be recreated, make sure we can fit it within the timeline constraints we have. Something has fifteen-day waiting period, others have to be done within seven days. So it's just the whole recalculation of the calendar.
Well, I'm available for meetings regardless of when it is, so.
Yes, I gotta look at it, because the, the county, and every city in Jefferson County, was going through the same. You're, you're saying that you want to get on top of this and, and let us know. The tax, whatever, it's okay.
We should, we should clear that tomorrow.
So how, how, how would we, how would you do that to clear it up? I mean, what would you do? Um, pass it through Mr. Monk again?
Well, first off, I call the tax assessor, also get involved. But, uh, like I said, if, if this is accurate, what, what Miss Eddington said, then every single entity in Jefferson County is in the same text. Because you're saying the county, and what the, and the language in this ad. But I haven't got to do that. And like I said, if you pass it tonight, it's determined that, uh, it's not correct, we can hold a meeting. We're gonna have a meeting by the end of the week to nullify what you did tonight and, uh, reset the schedule.
I'll take your word for it, that you're gonna get on top of this. I'm too greedy to go to jail. I'm gonna be looking for you.
So we would have another meeting this week about this?
If what she said is correct, they, they vote, if the notice is wrong, you know, we will have to have another meeting. And we would have something in writing that the county has done something wrong. Which would then update us. Yes, so that, that would be such a, um, both these things.
Is Mrs. Eddington out there?
Hi, yeah.
Oh, could you please come up front?
Sure.
Okay, so we're discussing.
I've been, yeah, I've been listening.
Okay, okay. And you, you understand what he was saying is that if this is correct, and I'm not saying you're, you know, just pulling something out there. If it's correct, then Jefferson County that sent us the information that we used is wrong.
Correct, but I hold the city responsible for knowing what they have to post and not.
Oh, I understand that.
So, um, but it's correct. I'm gonna tell you, it's correct. I got that directly from the Texas tax code. I didn't make that up.
No, I'm not, you just make it up.
Yeah, so, you know, Jefferson County can claim that they're not responsible for it, but the city still is responsible to make sure that it's accurately, accurately displayed.
Yeah, I understand. So your, your problem with it was the way it was displayed? Your problem is with it is the way the notices were written?
Yeah, it's unlawful. I mean, it clearly is not following what it's laid out to be. I mean, it, it's clear. You can look at what I highlighted.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
You know? I mean, it, it's not difficult to read it, and, and what has to be displayed. So I, I support y'all checking it out and looking at it and seeing what's right and what's wrong. You know, but I do think the city needs to be responsible for making sure that all their Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
So, yeah. Okay.
Uh, we're still under council member questions. Unless everyone's done.
Uh, this is a really hard tough decision, and it has to be made. And it's hard for me, just like it is. Anybody else? I mean, if the only other option is not to pass it, and if we don't pass it, what happens then?
Yeah.
Good. All right, we'll be closing this meeting. City Council of Groves will vote on the proposed tax rate today during the regularly scheduled meeting immediately following this public hearing as listed on the respective agenda. This public hearing is closed at seven oh six. All right. Now we'll move to item number nine. Gonna be deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, maintenance and operations tax rate of point five five six seven six or one hundred by record vote.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
Make a motion with deliberate act on the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Uh, maintenance and operations tax rate of zero point five five six seven seven six at one hundred by record vote.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, maintenance and operations tax rate at point five five six seven seven six or one hundred by record vote. Are there any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor votes in McAdams. Councilmember Canis. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item number ten, deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, interest and sinking tax rate of point zero four five one four eight or one hundred by record vote.
I'll make a motion, deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, interest and sinking tax rate of zero point zero four five one four eight or one hundred by record vote.
I'll say. Have a motion and a second to deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, interest and sinking tax rate point zero four five one four eight or one hundred by record vote. Are there any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor votes in McAdams. Councilmember Canis. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item eleven. Deliberate act on adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by record vote. Make a motion, deliberate act on adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
A second.
A motion, or a motion and a second to deliberate act on adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by record vote. Are there any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor votes in McAdams. Councilmember Canis. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. And number twelve, deliberate act on ratification of property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Make a motion, deliberate act on ratification of property tax increase reflected in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Make a motion with deliberate act on ratification of property tax increase reflected in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget.
Say.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on the ratification of property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, do we have any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. Item thirteen, deliberate act on adoption of a resolution approving the investment policy of the city of Groves, Texas.
Make a motion to deliberate an act on adoption of a resolution approving the investment policy of the city of Groves.
I'm sorry, we're gonna amend that to resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, if you don't mind, Mark. All right. And you can just send resolution twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty five.
Second. Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five. Do I have any questions? And I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the city council of the city of Groves establishing a review of the investment policy of the city of Groves and recording changes to the investment policy or investment strategies. I have any questions?
No, sorry, sorry, there, there are level, uh, changes to the policy, but we'll ask you.
Okay, uh, no questions, we'll vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, this resolution. Okay. Deliberate act on ordinance emitting the water and wastewater rate structures. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
I'll make a motion with deliberate act on ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty, amending the water and wastewater structure.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty, amending the water and wastewater rate structures, do I have any question? Mr. Manager, this, uh, this implements the structure rate, uh, going into effect.
Right, and, and, yes, to review, this addresses five objections that we had at the beginning of, of the process. To be our rising cost of capital improvements, building up our cash reserves to one hundred and eighty days. And, uh, introducing carried water rates to promote conservation. And implementing recommendations on commercial minimum monthly charges.
And when are these going into effect?
There we go, into effect once the bill that comes out in October.
October.
For the first year, the first year increase, year, year one, correct, year one increase.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion, hold it, vote.
So, that year one increase, that, that, be reevaluated every October?
No, we have a five-year plan, and the five-year is laid out for five years.
So it would change every October, not?
Yes. Any other question? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. Item thirteen, this is another ordinance. Delivering act of proven annual appropriation ordinance, which is twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. For the city of Groves, Texas, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Appropriating funds for disbursement for the various purposes and uses of the city, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date. And we can just use the ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Make a motion with deliberate an act to approve annual appropriation ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
We motion and a second to deliberate an act to approve the annual appropriation ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, do I have any questions? This allows us to spend the money, correct?
Per the chart.
Per the chart. Any other questions? No other question, we vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. Item sixteen, deliberate act on an ordinance approving the tax, tax assessment rolls for the year twenty twenty-four, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. Levying and assessing taxes for the support of the city of Groves and the municipal government thereof. Appropriating each levy for specific purposes, levying and assessing occupation taxes in a hotel occupancy tax. Providing the date for the collection of taxes, providing a savings clause, and providing for an effective date.
Please note, the motion has to be made in the bold lettering below.
No, on the blue page, if you make the motion, please read the, make the motion for the bold portion, uh, this is page two hundred is incorrect. Is that right, page two hundred?
I'll make the motion. To deliberate an act on the twenty twenty-four dash nine.
Just read the.
Okay.
Read the whole part.
I move the property tax rate being increased by the adoption of tax rate of zero point six zero one nine two four at one hundred. Which is effectively a seven point six six percent increase in tax rate.
Have a motion and a second. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of point six zero one nine two four per one hundred, which is effectively a seven point six six percent increase in the tax rate. Do I have any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. Item seventeen, deliberate act on interlocal agreement with the cities of Nederland and Fort Natures. For the operation of the central dispatch facility and information technology department. And authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute all necessary documents, I suppose, the city manager?
That's what I asked.
It should be city manager, it's.
No, a- actually, they, uh, provided the documents to us, and they had all the mayors on it, so.
That's what you do.
But you, council can authorize anybody, but since I had the other two mayors on there, it seemed appropriate for you, so.
Make a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to deliberate an act on interlocal agreement with the cities of Nederland and Fort Natures. For the operation of the central dispatch facility and information technology department, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on interlocal agreement with the cities of Nederland and Fort Natures. For the operation of the central dispatch facility and information technology department, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute all necessary documents. Do I have any questions?
Okay, now, why, why are you doing this? Cause this is, Mr. Creek, this is your forte, I mean, this is what you do, you know, negotiate, start.
Well, it's, it's, there's really nothing to negotiate, this is, um, uh. Just making, uh, really a minor change to the existing interlocal, uh, that we've had. Literally iterations for over fifty years for dispatch and I T. Uh, what has changed is the software for fire department. And with, I think, had that on agenda, we went too bad, yeah, and then, uh, uh. Crown Strike, which is an invoice security, um, is, is being added, and it just. I think that is also the way you pay for it, it's going to basically be, uh, number of users, I suppose, to just the thirty, thirty-third, which is what it has now. And, uh, it's just maybe the agreement for that, so there's nothing really for us to negotiate.
The one that is going to change?
Yes.
To what?
Now, to actual users.
Okay, to what we actually use.
What?
Is that gonna be better for us?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor votes in McAdams, council member Canis, council member Oliver, council member Dugess. Motion passes. All right. Move on to item eighteen, which would be, uh, council member comments.
I think I've been asked, yeah, everything there is to say. This was not an easy decision for me, very hard, but it had to be made by the county.
All right, thank everybody for coming. Like you said, it's not easy, I appreciate your attendance, and we appreciate your being here.
And let, let me do say on that, I'm so thankful that all of you came, I'm very, very glad you did, and I'm very happy that you voiced your opinions. Thank you for doing it, I know sometimes it's not easy.
Oh, good. Appreciate it a lot, you came as well, and, and hopefully, uh, some better understanding of what we, uh, try to deal with. Hopefully, it, it sheds a little, little light, it's not fun, but it's, it's important, we signed up, and. We're working at it hard, it's, it's tough, but, uh, appreciate y'all's concern, and, uh. Hopefully, we can, together, uh, turn something around. That's all.
Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you in that, you know, thirty or so on meetings we have to hear, or more than welcome every time. We'll adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-two, thank you.